Move on to Article 3.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to move Article 3 with a change in the salaries customarily. Oh, we need a second. What I'm trying to do is the elected officials are requesting, the same as the wage of personnel, 1.6 percent increase.
This would be...
And this would encompass the salary of the town clerk, the treasurer-collector, and the highway surveyor.
Okay. The article is moved, needs a second. Moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee on Article 3.
Mr. Moderator, we ask for just a moment to confer.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends...
Finance Committee recommends...
Do you need to speak to it? The elected officials that I just mentioned are not covered under wage and personnel, nor do they have contracts. Customarily, in the past, the town people have voted to do the same for the elected officials as they did for the wage and personnel and perhaps the contracted people.
Thank you, Mrs. Gainer. Any discussion? Mr. Gainer, any discussion indicated?
Mr. Moderator, they couldn't hear the last question.
They couldn't hear it?
They have difficulty hearing it.
Okay. So, we're on Article 3. It's been requested that there be an adjustment of 1.6 percent similar to employees. The recommendation of the Finance Committee was to recommend it, has been moved and seconded. And there are several positions that are not covered by contracts or unions, if I understand this correct. And they are listed under Article 3. Yep, I'm sorry. These three, okay. The three positions: town clerk, treasurer-collector, and highway surveyor. I see no indication of discussion on this side. Any discussion indicated there?
Yes, sir. We have one.
Thomas Manning, 10 Sycamore Drive. On the town clerk, the treasurer-collector, and the highway surveyor, are they all full-time?
I believe they are. Is that correct? They're full-time positions, correct?
What's full-time? Forty hours?
Hold on one second. We'll get the first answer to your question. Hang on.
Okay. I'll take that in two pieces. One, they're elected positions. There are no set specific hours. It's not an hourly rate. You take the job, you do the job. It's whatever hours it takes to do the job. As I think all three incumbents recognize and have performed that way. No, and Barb, and the current town clerk may want to add something to what I'm going to say, is that in the past, when we've looked at these salaries and looked at those versus wage of personnel employees or similar positions in other communities, the highway surveyor and the treasurer-collector have always been considered at least a 40-hour-a-week position. The clerk, and I will be happy to stand corrected on this, because these are 32 or 34 hours.
Okay.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two?
Thirty-two.
Okay. So, it's been, when the salary has been adjusted versus other town clerks in other communities, and we look at it on a per-hour basis, it's been rated as a 32-hour position. The other positions most definitely are 40-hour positions.
Okay. They're full-time. Okay. Thank you.
All right. See any other indication of discussion? So, I'm going to ask for all of those in favor of Article 3, please raise your green sheets signifying you are in agreement. All of those who are opposed? I have green here, Mr. Gainer.
I have eight in favor and four opposed.
So, it's green. Okay. Article 3 passes. We move on to Article 4, referred to as the Budget Article.
I'd like to move Article 4 as printed on the pink handout that was out in the lobby. This handout has been adjusted to include the 1.6 percent wage increase on all the wage and personnel and elected official positions, as well as an increase in the school budget.
I'm also going to ask for the indulgence of Town Meeting. In the past, we've read through each line item. I would like to do something a little bit more helpful in terms of voting a section at a time, as we often do, except I will ask for any of the items that people would like a hold on, so that we can discuss those separately or answer any questions you might have. But I would very much like to avoid, for your day and my sake, not having to read each line item. Does that seem to be a reasonable course of action for people? And even if it doesn't, I have some latitude here. So, the first group under General Government, Items 1 through 43. Do we have any items that folks have a hold or a question on?
I have a hold on the law, 6.
Number 6, law, okay. Any others? Mr. Gainer?
No holds indicated here, sir.
No holds here? All right. So, what I'm going to ask you to do is signify that you are in favor of General Government section, except for the law number 6, the law line. Signify by holding up your green placards. If you are opposed, please hold up your red. Okay. Mr. Gainer, what's it look like there?
Unanimous in favor.
Okay. So, it is, it passed, other than Item 6. So, Item 6, your hold, Mr. Andrews?
I move to amend the law line to $74,000 with that motion not to authorize the Board of Selectmen to expend any funds to defend lawsuits where the town boards ignore the town's attorney's advice that the Halifax taxpayers have already spent money on. That includes 17 MSC 00507 and the appeal of that, and 20 MISC 00072, sorry, 372, and 2083 CV 000256. These are lawsuits where the town's boards ignore the town's attorney's advice, and the Board of Selectmen has been defending those lawsuits.
You are proposing an amendment, changing the figure, if I understood, to 74,000, is that correct?
Correct.
100, 74,100, the amount that's in there now from last year? Or voted? Wait a minute. I'm sorry.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Sealy.
I'll speak on a couple of points. And obviously, this is extremely awkward for me. The previous speaker is one of my supervisors, one of my bosses, one of the people who signs my contracts. Yet, this previous speaker has, in fact, sued the town on numerous occasions during the last several years. He would like the town not to do anything, not defend against his litigation against the town. Obviously, that's his prerogative as a resident and as a plaintiff in those cases. However, the responsibility for defending the town does rest with the Board of Selectmen, and that is strictly listed in state law and the town's bylaws. He has a conflict of interest in proposing this. He would like the town, in essence, to roll over, to offer no defense. This is a matter, obviously, of disagreements of what the zoning bylaws are, disagreements between plaintiff and the Zoning Board of Appeals and other town officials. That's fine. That's all perfectly fine. But when one side is, in essence, saying to the other side, "I want you to go home, I want you not to do anything, I want you to lie down, I want you to provide no defense because I'm the plaintiff," that's not right. I would ask that you speak with Town Council concerning, in fact, what the state law and the town's bylaws are on that subject. But I do not recommend that you approve this amendment.
Point of order.
Point of order. Right here, point of order.
Do we, as a town, need to give someone who's not a resident of this town permission to speak before the body?
No.
We do, and it's assumed that the town administrator, when asked, if asked, would be more than welcome to give feedback.
Mr. Moderator, just a point of order. An amendment has been proposed to the amount. Have we, has there been a second to that motion? Are we currently considering an updated amount?
We've had a motion. We have not heard a second yet. It's been moved and seconded. We still have an opportunity for further discussion. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yeah. Sorry.
I would just like to say that I did not hear Mr. Andrews say that we should roll over. He's saying that we shouldn't be paying for lawsuits that Town Council agrees we shouldn't be paying for. And Charlie Sealy's opinion, as a resident of Rhode Island, not Massachusetts, in what he feels, is not acceptable. Mr. Moderator?
Yeah, hold on. Yes.
From the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee.
As I, as I understand, the Finance Committee will provide a recommendation now on the amended amount that's been seconded. The Finance Committee does not recommend the amended amount. The reason the Finance Committee originally agreed to the $124,000 amount, or the amount that's printed on the pink sheet that you have there, is because we have seen many legal bills come before the Finance Committee, and we do not have sufficient money in the law account to be able to pay those. We then have to pull that money out of the reserve fund. The reserve fund is money that you, as the members of Town Meeting, vote to set aside for unforeseen circumstances or unforeseen events. So, we spent it before, in the past, on a field's fence that got blown over in a storm, for example, right? Things that we could never have thought would happen, but they happened, and we need to address them. At the point at which we're not able to pay our legal bills, I would ask you, Mr. Moderator, through you to Town Council, what happens to the town, what kind of liability we expose ourselves to if we stop paying our legal bills? And if we stop pulling the money out of the reserve fund, which the Finance Committee does not touch for any other reason, the money doesn't stay with us, we merely have a vote on it. Excuse me. And one more quick point, Mr. Moderator. Someone who works in public administration, the idea that someone who is a public administrator for a town and absolutely has to live in that town does not exist in the field. It's completely normal for folks to be town administrators of other towns in which they don't live. It's a really common practice in the field, and I'm actually a professor of the field.
Okay. Let me try to get an answer for you from...
Mr. Moderator?
What?
Mr. Moderator?
Hang on. I've got a question that was raised here.
Yeah. I think the question was, what happens? Larry, 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 you need a mic. You need a mic. Again, my name's Larry Mayo, Town Council, and I think the question to me was, what happens if the town doesn't fund the legal account? What happens if it doesn't fund the legal account and can't defend itself? Well, in that case, you're at risk of loss, potentially substantial loss. So, either you defend yourself by way of funding the law budget, or you potentially lose a judgment in court to a plaintiff, whether it be somebody with a potential conflict or whether it be some other third party in town. Again, the risk of loss and the risk of expense is far greater to town than if you don't fund and defend yourself by way of the law budget.
Mr. Andrews?
Mr. Moderator, I have disclosed all the conflicts with these lawsuits with the town clerk's office. I have no conflict of interest standing here as a private citizen bringing this motion forward. The town was given counsel by its attorneys. The town boards chose to ignore that. I pursued a lawsuit, multiple lawsuits against the town, because the town continues to ignore its attorney's advice. I don't understand why the town is defending a private developer's interest and not the town's. Last meeting in May, there was a special town meeting where there is a motion to move money into the law line. That was defeated. The town moved the money anyways through a different process and paid that. So, the Town Meeting spoke. They said not to spend the money on the lawsuit. The Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee moved the funds from a different line. So, this isn't something new coming before you. I'm asking the town not to authorize the board to spend any further money defending these lawsuits.
Mr. Andrews?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Garen? I'm sorry. Mr. Millius?
I don't want to get into litigating this thing on Town Meeting floor. But the town's being sued for a considerable amount of money. There's been some commentary about, against the advice of council. Even that is being litigated. There's a difference of opinion about that. The bottom line, and again, I don't want to get into litigating this thing. This town's being sued, not just the developer, but the town. We're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars here. We need to defend ourselves. Now, that defends board members too, including myself, including the entire Board of Selectmen, the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Planning Board.
Wait, wait. Let's let him finish. Conversation has to come through the moderator, otherwise this is not going to be the right process. So, Mr. Millius, will you finish with your...
For the moment, yeah. Mr. Moderator, the only lawsuits included in my motion are the ones that are before land court.
Sir?
Ma'am.
Ma'am, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
It really is not a comment. I just, I literally...
It's fine.
You're now, you're now showcased behind this lovely lighted door, so I apologize.
I just have a question, I guess, to Mr. Andrews through you. I'm wondering if he can clarify his motion, because I'm hearing two different things. I'm hearing that we are amending the dollar amount, and then I'm also hearing that we are requesting that we no longer fund... I'm trying to think of the words. I'm hearing two different things. The dollar amount and that, oh, we no longer fund...
Because it's a budget article?
No, no, no. Not the legal account.
No, I understand what you're asking.
That we no longer fund the lawsuits that we went against the direction of Town Council. Two different things I'm hearing, right?
I think we're restricted, if I'm understanding this right, in the budget, to either vote the budget, amend the budget. So, we're talking about amounts. We're not talking about what the dollar's used for. And I saw a question or a comment being raised by our...
Right. So, that's what I'm looking for clarification on.
Sure.
So, is the amended amount the amount less the amount that we're defending the cases against Town Council? You following what I'm saying?
No.
Are we only amending the dollar amount, or are we directing how the money is being spent?
Understood.
I'm hearing both of those things in the same sentence.
Mr. Andrews, do you want to respond?
In this, in this motion, I am amending the amount and restricting the Board of Selectmen's ability to expend, which is, which is legal to do, as we are the legislative body, and we can restrict how the funds are used.
Yeah. I would only clarify that, as I understand this, we're talking about a budget item, dollars up, dollars down, amended. This is not, what's before us is literally in the warrant, and there isn't a discussion in the warrant of restricting authorities or anything like that. I wanted to defer to Town Council on this.
And again, if I'm understanding things properly, the Town Meeting is being asked not to authorize or not to allow the Board of Selectmen to defend itself or the town. The Town Meeting doesn't have that authority. That authority is exclusively vested in the Board of Selectmen as a matter of our own bylaws and as a matter of Massachusetts general law. In my view, it doesn't have the authority not to tell the town not to defend itself. That's my opinion.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Andrews?
This board is the legislative body of the town, and it can tell, it can direct the Board of Selectmen how to expend funds. And by making this part of the motion on the law line, it restricts their ability to expend funds in that manner.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes. Question?
Do you have Melinda on the side?
From the Finance?
Oh, I'm sorry. Melinda.
Mr. Moderator, point of clarification or point of order from you to Town Council, does advance notice of such a change have to be given to potential members of Town Meeting if we're going to attempt to restrict the manner in which the Board of Selectmen can authorize the expenditure of funds, as well as the Finance Committee?
Yeah. I'm at the, I don't have, in my mind, I don't have, we don't have the authority to go into an area that's not clearly stated in the warrant. And the warrant, Budget Article 4, is about dollars up, dollars down, amended. It's not about differing authority. And this town body may have the authority when it's given prior notice of warrant items that could be talked about. That's not included anywhere in here. So, I'm not going to allow that. I will allow certainly the amendment of a figure to be discussed and to be amended if this body wants to vote for that amendment or not, and then we'll move to approve or not approve. Sir, in the back?
David Macio, 1610th Ave. Charlie pointed out that it was a conflict of interest with the resident. The resident had grievance, and this is why it is brought up as a conflict of interest, and I think the town should know, that certain boards did not abide by the bylaws in order to keep things in provisions of the town, which we'll get to, I'm sure, sometime today. But people need to be aware that the conflict of interest that the resident of Halifax had is why the litigation and the money is needed for the countersue or to defend itself against the resident, and he's only doing what he didn't because of the bylaws that he was following that weren't followed by our boards, overlooked, and allowed the contractor to do things.
I think, and again, I appreciate the concerns here. We, we're just moving outside the bounds, the four corners of this question.
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator, from the Finance Committee?
Yes.
I just want to clarify, as we mentioned, since we're only having this discussion, we were having the discussion about the proposed amount to bring that back to the FY '20 line of $74,100. The reason the Finance Committee authorized the amount you see to the far right, that $124,500, is because we had to make up the balance of those legal bills from the reserve fund. And just to note, last year, we spent about $56,000 of the reserve fund, right? This is the money that you vote to place into a reserve fund. So, out of the $56,000 that we spent out of that account, nearly $34,000 of that went to law bills. So, just to give you a sense of the magnitude of how much of our reserve fund is being dedicated to having to sort of ad hoc pay these legal bills, we thought that it was more prudent and to bring in front of the town the advanced planning to set that money aside now for the law account, knowing that over the past few years, as you can see, we've been spending more and more, and we wanted to come out of the correct line, which is the law account, and not to continue to pay for it out of the reserve fund, which we're supposed to be setting aside for unforeseen events, like I just mentioned. So, if this is a very much foreseen event, we want the money to be placed in the correct line, which is what we're voting on today.
Thank you, Ms. Darcy.
I have two questions. The first one is, does our town have any type of insurance? Sorry. Does our town have any type of insurance?
Yeah. Can you step up closer to the mic again? I'm sorry. Say that again.
I said, I have two questions. The first one is, does our town have insurance against this type of thing? And the second one is, did the Board of Selectmen actually move money to pay after the townspeople said last time not to? Because Mr. Millius started this meeting by saying, "We, the townspeople, get to decide where the money go, and we get to vote." But it would be unsettling me to know that the Selectmen are then moving funds between lines to pay for things that the townspeople did not agree with.
Let me see if I can get an answer for both those questions. Thank you. Question about insurance first? We have...
Miss Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
The town has an obligation to defend itself, whatever that has to be. What's not being said here is, if you do not defend yourself against these lawsuits, you will then expose yourself to being sued by a third party. And in my opinion, talking millions in that particular lawsuit.
Okay.
The town needs to protect itself.
And I appreciate that. But the two questions were, do we have insurance that might relate to protection of the town in lawsuits?
Okay. So, I'll answer the two pieces. It depends on the lawsuit. It depends on the lawsuit. Several of the lawsuits are simply land use questions, conflicts between two parties as the interpretation of the bylaw and whether special permits and other permits were properly granted. There's no specific insurance for something like that. When a lawsuit, and one has been filed, is about the public officials and their acts and whether they're malicious, for instance, we do have insurance for that, and we are working with our insurer on that. But on a land use case, we don't have particular insurance. That's why you see those legal bills for the land use litigation.
Second question, as I understand it, is where funds used to pay for legal expenses outside of what the town had authorized? If I'm, I don't want to put words in your mouth, if that, that's the question, correct? Is there an answer to that question? Yes. Ms. Darcy?
Mr. Moderator, as far as I can remember, and I'm happy to go back and look at the meeting minutes, if we took any votes to balance out accounts or to zero out accounts at the end of the year, we would have done that during, doing line item transfers, which is a common practice to settle the books at the end of the fiscal year. And that's how, for example, like, as you see in front of you, we might not expend everything on a particular expense line, let's say. So, at the end of the year, if another line came up short in that regard, we would spend it there. Now, when we get, when we, as a Finance Committee, receive law bills, we don't choose to pay certain court cases or not. We simply see this as a debt that we, as the town, owe, and that we, as a Finance Committee, have to figure out a way to pay, because we have to balance the books at the end of every fiscal year. We can't head into the next fiscal year in debt. The state has to certify all of our finances. Our town employees work really, really hard to do that. So, in terms of quote-unquote "moving money around," line item transfers are completely common. They happen in open meeting, to which everyone is invited, and they have to be approved by a majority vote of the Finance Committee, as well as by the Board of Selectmen.
You have some...
Thank you. In the back, yes.
This is Amy Troop, 10 Hillside Ave. I believe the question was, was last May of 2019, there not a vote by the public body not to pay for specific items? And then, during the fiscal year, money was moved to pay those items, which is against the body of this town? I believe the question is, was that not a vote last year? And the vote was that we would not pay that?
No. I think the one clarification I would make, I understand the point of the question, is that Town Meeting votes a line item. It doesn't vote to restrict what that is, or other than what the line item is for. It doesn't direct the town which accounts to pay or not. What you're asking is, were there additional dollars that were used for legal expenses beyond that line item? If that's the question, I think I'm hearing.
Mr. Moderator?
Yeah.
From the Finance Committee to answer that question. It goes back to the point that we were making about the fact that we, as the members of Town Meeting, aren't voting to tell the Board of Selectmen or the Finance Committee or whomever the manner in which they expend the funds that are dedicated to a particular line. From my memory, the vote that took place on that annual Town Meeting in May was to transfer... transfer money from a particular line somewhere else into the law line. That was voted down, so that transfer can then not occur. There were no subsequent votes that were attempted to say, we don't want to pay our legal bills anymore. And that's what we, as a finance committee at least, have to abide by. When we're presented with a bill that is valid for services rendered, we have to figure out a way to pay that bill. And I think that's what we keep coming back to, it's the amount in question and the amount that the finance committee has recommended now for weeks has been the $124,500 amount so that we can continue to cover our debts and pay our bills.
Thank you, Ms. Darcy.
You have?
William Pond, again. First of all, I don't care where Charlie lives, I'm glad he's our town administrator. Second of all, if the town is being sued, I want to be protected. It's, it's my town too. I don't want somebody from the town suing the town and then saying, we can't pay that person, you know, we can't pay for any defense of our own. So if somebody's suing the town, we should be able to protect ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have another?
I'm sorry. Yep.
Deb Winowitz, 60 Sycamore. Correct me if I'm wrong, but aren't usually?
Close to the mic.
Yeah, speak to the mic.
Aren't usually amendments to articles, things that don't make that substantial changes? I believe what we're being asked is a substantial change to that article, and it's usually not allowed.
Again, what's being amended, or what I can allow is being amended, is the amount. There's an amendment being proposed to change the amount that's in here, that's one of the reasons you can't ask for a hold, and so we first need to act on whether the town body wants to do an amendment. And if they don't, then we go to vote that line item the way it has been written. That is my understanding.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
It almost seems as though we, the townspeople, are being asked to get in the middle of some kind of personal issue going on here.
I, I don't know exactly the nature of it, but I would agree with you, and I'm working hard at keeping this issue between the four bounds of what we are voting here. So I, I understand what you're saying.
Right, I mean, just by the whole tone, we're being asked to do something as a town that's personal. They're referencing attorney papers that we don't know anything about, and who did this and who did that, and I for one resent it.
Understood, thank you. I haven't gone to our other room. Mr. Gaynor, has there been any indication of questions there?
Negative, no indication here.
Okay, thank you.
Dennis?
Fred has a question.
I'm sorry, sir.
My name's Fred McGovern, 299 South Street.
Fred, you need to get closer.
Fred McGovern, 299 South Street. Now, I'm not real happy with this huge law bill, but the end of the day, Mr. Andrews is asking us to lower the amount and then to refuse to pay bills for services that have already been rendered. So what's going to happen there is, we're going to refuse to pay legal counsel, and then they're going to turn around and probably sue us because they've already rendered services. That also then restricts us because legal counsel ain't going to want to represent us when we're not paying the bills. So then when we get sued by somebody for a 40B, we don't have representation anymore because we're not paying the legal bills.
Thank you, sir. All right, we're being asked to act for, oh, I'm sorry, Sandy Mellon, our town accountant.
Hi, just speaking as the town accountant and just looking?
You're going to have to get closer to the mic.
Just speaking as the town accountant and looking at the numbers. Basically, I recommended the increase in the law account because I'm interested in paying the bills and making sure we have enough money in the line to pay the bills. Back in FY18, we were already over that 74,1 number, so we, we spent $81,000 in FY18, $122 in FY22. So I really do think that we need to increase this number. So I, I urge you to vote no on the amendment.
So we have an amendment before us, it's been moved and seconded to amend the figure from, if I, if I heard this correctly, from the 70, from the 124 down to $74,000, and we need to vote on that, whether to have that amendment moved. So it has to be amended first and then voted, or amended, not voted, and then we revert to the actual vote. Does that sound like it made sense? I'm asking our legal folks and all that. So, on the motion to amend the figure, I need a vote if you are in agreement to changing the figure, that means amending it down from the 124 down to 74, please signify by raising your green sheets. All of those who are not in favor signify by raising your red sheets. Mr. Gaynor, what do you got in your room?
I have eight opposed.
Okay. All right, the amendment fails, so now we have, everything has already been voted in that line item except the law line item. Now, we'd enter, we need to move, or it's been moved to, I need a motion and a second to approve the line item as written.
Mr. Moderator, I move, we accept the line item number six, law account as written.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the line item as written, please raise your green sheets. Any opposed to that figure, please raise your sheets, red sheets. Mr. Gaynor?
I had three opposed and 11 in favor.
Item passes, move on from general administration to the next group, which is Public Safety Police, items 44 through 50. Do we have any holds on line items 44 through 50? Mr. Gaynor, I hate to keep doing this to you, but do you have any, any indication of holds?
Negative, no indications of a hold.
So all those in favor of line items 44 through 50 as presented in the pink sheets, please signify by raising your green sheets. Any opposed to line items 44 through 50 as written, please raise your red ones.
Only one passes. Only one.
Thank you, no, I had a feeling. Mr. Gaynor, how did we do there?
Unanimous vote in favor.
So, line items for Public Safety Police pass. Line items 51 through 59, Public Safety fire. Do we have any holds? Seeing no indication of a hold there, Mr. Gaynor?
No indications of a hold.
So all of those in favor of line items 51 through 59 as listed, the pink sheets, please signify by raising your green sheets. Any opposed, please raise your red sheets. Mr. Gaynor, how did we do there?
Unanimous in favor.
Line items 51 through 59, under Public Safety Fire, all pass. Public Safety, Other, Public Safety, line items 60 through 67, do we have any holds? Mr. Gaynor?
No holds indicated.
So all of those who are in favor of line items 60 through 67, Public Safety, Other, Public Safety, please signify by holding your green cards up. Any who are opposed for line items 60 through 67, please indicate by holding up your red card. See none here, Mr. Gaynor?
Unanimous in favor.
Line items 60 through 67, Public Safety, Other, Public Safety, pass. We have just one line item 68 under Dispatch Services, so I will just move, for all of those in favor of line item 68 as presented, the pink sheets, please signify by raising your green sheets. Any who are opposed, please signify by raising your red sheets. How did we do on your end, Mr. Gaynor?
Unanimous in favor.
So that line, line item 68 is passed as written. Next main item is Schools, line item 69 through 74. Do we have any indication of a hold here, or do we have anyone who has a hold on any of the line items? Mr. Gaynor, any on your end?
No, no indications of a hold.
So all of those in favor of the Schools, line item 69 through 74, please signify by raising your green cards again, your green sheets. Any who are opposed, please signify by raising your red sheets. Mr. Gaynor?
Unanimous in favor.
Line item 69 through 74, Schools, passes. Oops, didn't want to do that, hang on. Public Works Highway, is that correct? Yeah, I'm sorry. Next section, Public Works Highway, line item 75 through 88. Do we have any desire for holds? Mr. Gaynor, any indication of holds in your room?
No indications of a hold.
So all those in favor of lines 75 through 88 as presented in the pink sheets, please signify by raising your green cards high. Any who are opposed, please raise your red card signifying you oppose. Mr. Gaynor, how did we do?
Unanimous in favor.
Line items 75 through 88, Public Works Highway passes. Public Works Cemetery, line items 89 through 91, any indication of a hold here? Mr. Gaynor?
No indications of a hold.
All of those who are in favor of line items 89 to 91, Public Works Cemetery as listed in your pink sheet, please raise your green tag signifying yes, you approve. If you are not in favor, please raise your red card signifying you oppose. Mr. Gaynor?
Unanimous in favor.
Line items 89 through 91, Public Works Cemetery, pass. Next section, Public Works Water, line items 92 through 102, any indication or any, any desire for a hold or discussion? Mr. Gaynor?
No indications of a hold.
All of those who are in favor of line items 91 through 102, Public Works Water as written in the pink sheets, please signify by raising your green card if you approve. Anyone who is opposed, please raise your red sheet. Mr. Gaynor?
Unanimous in favor.
Line items 92 through 102, Public Works Water, pass. Public Works Solid Waste Management, line items 103 to 108, any desire for a hold or Mr. Gaynor?
No indication of a hold.
All of those in favor of lines one item, of lines 103 to 108, for Public Works Solid Waste Management, please raise your green tag signifying you approve if you do. Any who are opposed, please raise your red tag, your red sheet. Mr. Gaynor?
Unanimous in favor.
Line items 103 to 108, pass for Public Works Solid Waste Management. Line items, in the next section, do I miss?
Health and Human, yeah, 109 to 122, Health and Human Services, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I talk myself out of things. Okay, sorry about that. The next section is Health and Human Services, line items 109 to 122. Do we have any need for a hold or discussion? Seeing none here, Mr. Gaynor?
No indication.
All of those who are in favor of Health and Human Services, line item 109 to 122, please signify aye by raising your green sheet, that's if you do approve. Any who are opposed, please raise your red tags. Mr. Gaynor?
Unanimous in favor.
Line items 109 to 122, pass under Health and Human Services. Next section is Culture and Recreation, line items 123 to 139, any need for a hold or discussion?
Do you have a handle?
Yes?
131.
Any others? Mr. Gaynor, anybody in there for one?
No indication of a hold.
Okay, so what we're going to be asking you to do is voting on all of the items 123 through 139, with the exception of 133, under Culture and Recreation, all of those who are?
131.
Oh, I'm sorry, what did I say?
Hold 131.
Oh, gosh, I'm going to be in triple figures by the end of the day making mistakes. Okay, instead of, we're going to vote on all of them except line item 131, which should be cable television, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All of those who, in favor of those items, please signify by raising your green tags if you're in favor. Any opposed, please signify by holding your red card up. Mr. Gaynor, how did we do?
Unanimous in favor.
Okay, all the items 123 through 139, with the exception of 131, pass. Person who had the hold on 131, could you rise to your question or point?
William Pond, I'd just like to know where 1, 200,000 goes with the cable, the cable bill, that's kind of high.
Trying to find out for you, sir. So you want to know what that is for?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll speak to that, Dennis. So the town has a contract with Area 58 to provide public access TV, for instance, filming this meeting, filming other board and committee meetings, filming various town events, also any public-generated programming. The money to do that comes through the bills that cable subscribers pay to Comcast. You'll see that as a separate charge on the bill. All that happens is that we get a check four times a year for operating and one check a year for capital, that money comes from Comcast to the town, and then the money is passed through from the town to Area 58. No tax dollars are at risk at that. It's money coming in from Comcast, money goes to Area 58, Area 58 provides the programming.
Mr. Moderator, can I add to that? Just so you know, the way the money comes in, you get to pay it on your cable bill. You just don't get to figure it out when you're looking at it. There's a kind of a cryptic section of your cable bill, I'm trying to remember exactly what it says, some kind of service fee, but there's a percentage of your cable that goes to pay this. So you're not paying tax dollars, but you are paying for it. We've been trying to get some clarification from Comcast, but then COVID came and then everything got kind of messed up. But we're going to follow through with that, so just, just for clarity, so that everybody understands how this thing works. You're ultimately paying for it if you're a subscriber, just for edification. Thank you.
Any other questions about that line item? Okay, all of those in favor of voting the line item as printed, line item 131, please signify by raising your green cards high up in the air. I know you're getting tired, but you're doing great. Okay, all those who are not in favor, please raise your red tag signifying you don't approve. Mr. Gaynor, how did we do over there?
Unanimous in favor.
Okay, line item 131 passes, the next section? The next section, Debt Service, line items one forty through one forty... No, it continues on, doesn't it? So it goes through one forty-seven, am I correct? Yes.
Correct.
So line items one forty to one forty-seven under Debt Service, do we have any holds or needs for discussion? Seeing none here, Mr. Gaynor?
None here also.
All of those in favor of Debt Service, line items one forty to one forty-seven as written in your pink sheet, please signify by raising your green cards high. Any who are opposed, please raise your red tags. Mr. Gaynor?
Unanimous in favor.
Items one forty through one forty-seven, pass. Fixed Costs, line item one forty-eight through line item one fifty-five. Any need for a hold or discussion? Seeing none here, Mr. Gaynor, any there?
No holds indicated here.
No holds. Therefore, Fixed Costs, line item one forty-eight to one fifty-five. All of those who approve, please signify by raising your green cards high in the air. Okay, any opposed, please indicate by raising your red card. Mr. Gaynor, how over there?
Unanimous in favor.
Unanimous there, line items one forty-eight to one fifty-five, Fixed Costs passes as written. And I think that actually wraps up line item...
Mr. Moderator?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
So now that I've had a moment, I'm not sure procedurally the best way to go about this, so forgive me, and I'm going to ask you. So now that I've had a moment to comb through this pink sheet here, I've noticed there's some discrepancies, and I just want some clarification before we move on.
Totally fine.
I don't know if we have to go back and reconsider different line items or what, but...
All right, go ask away.
Work with me here. So we voted to raise some salaries in town. We gave everybody across the board a one-point-six, correct?
Correct.
And then we individually voted the clerk, the treasurer, collector, and the highway surveyor. So when I was looking at the pink sheet, this pink sheet does reflect the one-point-six percent increase across town, correct?
That is my understanding, correct?
Okay. So if you look at line twenty-one for the treasurer-collector salary, on the pink sheet it says seventy-three oh thirty-three. On the sheet that we voted previously for Article Three, it says seventy-two zero thirty-three. So it's a difference of a thousand dollars.
See the seventy-three, where are you seeing the seventy-two?
Dennis?
Dennis?
I can, Sandy.
Yeah, the answer? Oh, sorry.
I can speak to that. The difference is a thousand dollars, and that's because years ago we voted to allow the, a one-thousand-dollar stipend for a treasurer, a collector, a clerk, or a principal assessor who are certified. Because when these individuals are certified, they get a thousand-dollar stipend. So it's not reflected in the wage of the elected official, because if we hired an elected, if we had an elected official who was not certified, they would not get the thousand dollars, but it does have to be in the wage line.
Is the same true for the town clerk's salary as well? Because I know it's the same, okay. One more thing.
That's okay, you had other questions. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Sandy. The line thirty-two, the wage and personnel expense, since we've disbanded that board, do we still need to have that line item there at two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, or should we remove that?
Mr. Moderator, I can speak to that for the expense. There is a, or, there's the Massachusetts Municipal Association, so for instance, you have, the school committees have an association. The Mass Municipal Association also has divisions, including what's called the Massachusetts Municipal Human Resources Organization. We pay dues for that, and we're going to continue to participate in their activities via the Finance Committee and Board Selectmen, even though we won't have a wage and personnel board. Probably in fiscal twenty-two, we'll delete that line and move the two-fifty to someplace else, but for right now, just, it made it easier, so when we get that bill for the membership for this year, we'll have someplace to pay it.
Okay, thank you.
Bear with me. Why don't you all stand up for a second and stretch while I'm figuring something out, because you probably need it. If, if it helps you, don't do it if it doesn't, but I'll be right there. All right, folks, come on, you can, you can sit back down or not, if that's your choice. We are going to try to move a couple other things, and we hope in a, in a good way. We have a number of articles that we're going to refer to. This morning, we voted a collective of items to pass over, and that helped us because we were able to do that in one vote. We have a number of articles that we're going to refer to as a consent agenda. They're normally items that don't require discussion and a lot of thought, but similar to what we did with the Passover, we're going to list the articles, and if you have questions or a reason to hold them out for discussion, we will happily do that. We do not want to keep you from having the ability to discuss any of them. But let me leak, let me read through these, and we'll have some folks explain.
Dennis, I can, I'll read the numbers like I did for the first one.
Please, Charlie.
There was a separate handout that said, "Twenty-twenty Halifax Annual Town Meeting Consent Agenda Approval of Articles." This has the list of the articles and also the actual motions that you would be approving. Their article numbers are number five...
Yep, point raised, you...
Hear me?
Yep.
I think we should count quorum. I think we lost quorum.
If, I'm going to ask you, to let you know, if we count quorum and find there isn't a quorum, we have to discontinue town meeting and reconvene.
I understand that.
So are you, are you officially asking for a... Okay.
So, Dennis, we need to figure out a date.
Say again?
We need to figure out a date. If we're going to...
All right, ladies and gentlemen, I need your attention. There are a number of important issues that I want to make your, bring your attention Quorum has been questioned, and if we do a quorum count and find we don't have it, and it's pretty obvious we may not, we would have to reconvene to a time specific. As many of you know, the pandemic makes it very difficult to do things in places and scheduling in short amounts of time. The town is very, very committed to getting town meeting done. One of the reasons is we have tax bills that need to go out. If we can't meet the deadlines, tax bills have to be estimated and then resent out again and corrected. So there's an expense there. There's also an expense in having our friends from Area Fifty-Eight and other people who are taping come, and I'm just saying you need to be aware of that. It's another five thousand, six thousand dollars. Here's another item that you need to be aware of, because space isn't always available at the school. The only option we have of doing this within the next week is to have it done Thursday evening, and unfortunately, the only place that can be done is the Kingston Collective. That's obviously going to be a concern to reach a quorum, because once this town meeting has been convened at a quorum of a hundred, you can't lower the quorum, because we're recessing and reconvening. So it's going to be a challenge to reach the quorum. It might be a hardship for people to get over to Kingston, but in order for us to safely practice public safety issues with masks and social distancing, that's the option. So I'm only pointing all of this out because I want you to be fully knowledgeable of what a vote to call a quorum right now would mean. So it has been officially moved that we call the quorum. I need a second for that, or in order, if, if there's a change of heart of that, the person can withdraw their motion. So it's been moved and seconded to count the quorum. Okay, so we need to count, well, we can, we can see. In the room there, Mr., Mr. Gaynor, just as a curiosity, how many people do you have?
We have eleven.
Eleven, okay. And I clearly don't see enough people here to add up to a hundred, so there is no quorum. We then need a move to...
Tom?
Close town meeting or reconvene?
Tom, yes.
So we need a motion to re-town, reconvene town meeting to Thursday, September seventeenth at seven-thirty?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
I move that we reconvene the annual town meeting.
You have, you have...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hang on, are you, are you rising to a point of order?
I think it is. What happens if...
Try me.
You don't have a quorum at the second...
Stand close to the mic and speak up.
What happens if you don't have a quorum at the second meeting?
You, you can't convene town meeting if you don't have a quorum. You have to have a quorum.
We'd have to reschedule.
So we'd have to reschedule it again.
That is correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Other questions?
Mark Oak Street. So if we don't have a quorum on Thursday, we're paying a bill to rent the place that we're not going to use.
That's correct.
Can we do a two-thirds vote now to continue the meeting?
No.
So we're screwed either way.
I, well, I wouldn't put it that way. That's, yeah.
Amy Troop, Ten Hill side up. I would like to point out that there's a planning board meeting on Thursday night. So is that going to be canceled, or are we going to be able to go to the town meeting? Because...
Yeah, I, I can't, obviously, I can't speak for the planning board, but...
That, that's up to the planning board.
Logistically, as I understand it, this is our only option for a number of reasons. Yeah.
If I may, Mr. Moderator, if you're going to schedule a town meeting for Thursday, we will cancel the planning board. Excuse me, Alan Diaz, Snow Street, Chairman of the Planning Board.
Oh, okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
The chances are we're not going to finish the town meeting today anyway. We haven't gotten very far into this thing, and we've already put in a little over four hours. There are some things we need to get done absolutely by the seventeenth. We may still, it would have been nice if we get them done today, but clearly we don't have a quorum. So we're, we're going to have some challenges no matter what we do. But for the moment, I'm going to move that we adjourn this town meeting until Thursday the seventeenth at seven-thirty at the Kingston Collection.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by raising your green cards one last time, if that's your, any opposed. We didn't even count, that's why we're doing it, all right? Town meeting is officially reconvened until Thursday, September seventeen. Town meeting is officially reconvened until Thursday, September seventeenth, at Kingston Mall, seven-thirty.